Probably about one minute or whenever you're ready. Oh, okay. Yep. Ready when you are, Mike. Good. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Kitsap Regional Library Board of Trustees Regular Board Meeting, June 25, 2024. It's 5:30. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'm Eric Fong, President, and with me are Vice President Gina Steiner and Stephanie George and Eric Sisney. Marwan Cameron is on an excused absence today. So we'll go to Agenda Item 2, Kitsap Regional Library Mission Statement. Eric, could you read the statement for us, please?
Our mission statement is inspiring curiosity and connection.
Thank you very much. And we'll go to Jason for a welcome and introductions.
Good evening and welcome to our June Board Meeting. With me tonight are several spectacular leadership team members, starting left to right. Executive and Administrative Assistant Tammy Jeffries, Dan Baer, Chief Financial and Operating Officer, and one of our spectacular Deputy Directors, Wendy Kyle, Executive Director of Kitsap Regional Library Foundation. Let me get in closer. And then we've got Jeannie Allen, Director of Strategy and Communication. Last but not least, we have Mike Rose, who's the Director of Facilities and Information Technology. Not with us tonight on excused absences are Deputy Director of Public Services Shannon Peterson, who's on vacation, and our Director of DEI and Human Resources, Lacretia Robertson, who's at a conference in my hometown of Chicago. Another special guest joining us from the IT world is the wonderful Mike Carlisle, who'll be giving us a presentation later, and that is who we have with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? There are not? Great. Thank you. So we'll go to Item 5, Public Comment. Per the Public Engagement Board Policy, this time is designated for all residents of Kitsap County to present public comments. The public comment time is set aside for listening to feedback from community without discussion or debate with the speakers. Speakers are asked to follow the Public Comment Board Guidelines, which provides instructions and limitations to public comment that includes anonymous comments, forwarded emails of others' remarks, comments pertaining to personnel issues, and those that don't align with the library standards for patron conduct library policy. We do have one speaker. I'd like to invite her up, and please note that up to three minutes is allotted. So I'd like to introduce Regina Clark-Hill. Thank you, Regina, for joining us.
First of all, I'm glad there is a library. My mother was a very strict person. She was one of 13, and she was raised basically like a sharecropper. Most of her brothers and sisters dropped out of school at third grade or sixth grade because they were so embarrassed that they could only go to school when it rained so hard. And the kids would sing a song, "Here Come the Rainy Day, Here Come the Rainy Day Kids." So we know that there are library closings in Seattle. I'm proud that I've never read a book on a tablet. I like to fall asleep with my book, turn the pages, highlight it. That being said, I was very surprised when I came into the downtown Bremerton Library. I've been coming into Bremerton on and off as a Navy wife since 1996. I was first the Alaska, Oregon, Washington Political Action Chair for the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. I was privileged to be a delegate at the 99th Convention when President Barack Obama gave his famous speech that, "When I come back as your President of the United States," and we all went, "That man must be a little insane." And Diane Robinson was a very good friend of mine, and she used to have a Black Historical Society. Many people don't know, was right across from the KCI. I inherited a lot of those documents, and as a result of that, I was one of the people along with Diane Robinson, Flay Finister, Karen Vargas, Robert Body, Pastor Rochelle, who are now deceased, to try to get something named after Martin Luther King. They first offered an alley, then they offered the appropriate street. Then we found the letter from the Bill Gates Foundation saying that the library had been named after Martin Luther King. We were a bit confused because it was actually the building. But from that, we started collecting petitions to try to get the library named after Martin Luther King. We got the bus outside. There was some controversy about that because it really does not look like him. So when I went to the library and I saw that we have a new person who credited himself for getting the naming, I thought, wow, I feel like Hillary Clinton when they called the Affordable Healthcare Act Obamacare. So I just wanted to put that brief history there and to also thank you for your support of Juneteenth. Many don't know that there are two Juneteens. There's a Juneteenth rebooted, and the reason that happened was because Mayor Patty Lind, in her wisdom, thought it should be more meaningful than a day at a park with people eating. I have a placard that was on display for a week and a half here, and I'm looking for a permanent place next year for the display, perhaps Collective Vision Art Gallery or one of the smaller museums, because this town is like a ghost town now, being in the Norm Dixon post-COVID. But most people still don't know it's a national holiday. I'm not sure I agree with it being a national holiday, but thank you so much for letting me speak. As a former attorney, three minutes is not a lot of time, but I'm really trying to keep it short and simple. So thank you.
Thank you, Regina. Appreciate your comments. With that, we will move on to Agenda Item 6, the Consent Agenda. All matters listed within the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the Consent Agenda and placed on the regular Agenda by request. The Consent Agenda includes 6.01, minutes of the May 28, 2024 Regular Board Meeting, 6.02, payment of May 2024 bills, and 6.03, surplus library materials withdrawn from the collection for May 2024. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items?
I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And we will go to Agenda Item 7.01, Mission Moment, Keeping KRL Connected. Mike Carlisle, IT Networks and Systems Administrator. Mike, thank you for joining us today. Welcome.
Good evening, Board Members. As Mike is coming up to the dais, I just wanted to give a quick introduction and a little bit of background on him, just so you know where we're coming from with this one. Mike enlisted in the United States Army at age 19. He was trained as a combat medic and as a decorated combat veteran with four tours of duty in Iraq and Afghanistan. Following his discharge from the Army, Mike became a firefighter and paramedic with the Jefferson County Fire District 2 and 3. He served as a firefighter, a paramedic, and eventually a crew captain during his time there. And additionally, in this role, he was an EMS instructor for the county, conducting continuing education and recertification training for department staff and even CPR and public health training for the community members. While serving in Jefferson County, Mike's interests were drawn to a career in technology, and he jumped into school to become an IT professional. Mike has since earned an Associate's of Applied Science in Networking, a Bachelor's of Science in Information Systems, and a Bachelor of Science in Information Security. And he's considering, now that he's finished those three degrees, he's considering jumping into a master's degree along the same lines. He also holds so many technical certifications that I'm not willing to go through that list right now. Just too long. Mike has joined the library and joined us in the library in 2019 as a Network and Systems Administrator and is now our lead NSA, who helps me coordinate and prioritize the work of our five-person IT team. We've asked Mike to join us tonight for what we're calling a Mission Moment, where I think we would usually highlight a more public-facing version of our impact on the community. As you might have learned from this brief introduction, Mike is a very mission-oriented individual. Starting with his time in the Armed Forces and leading into his service as a paramedic, Mike has been driven and focused on the mission at hand. He's undertaken this, he's undertaken his career as an IT professional with the same drive, and he is laser-focused, let me tell you, on the mission of protecting our patrons and our staff from the bad actors in the digital realm. I feel strongly that his mission is a critical component of the library's greater mission, to inspire curiosity and connection. So much of what we do and our ability to do it comes from and through the technology that we are providing, maintaining, and protecting, and Mike is the heart of this for KRL. So with all that said, I'm very happy to introduce Mike Carlisle for his presentation this evening.
Thank you very much. That kind of destroys my introduction, so I'm going to go ahead and skip past that. Obviously, Mike Carlisle. The only thing I think he didn't cover is this October will be my five years with the library here. A couple of terms, just to keep everybody familiar and on the same page, is phishing and spearphishing. It's essentially, it's an email attack that impersonates legitimate entities such as companies or individuals in order to gain information. Spearphishing is the same thing, but instead of sending it out to everybody, they can get an email address, or they target specific individuals. Usually, it's directors, IT staff administration, people where they can actually do some damage if they get into their accounts. So let's get to the next one. Something else I wanted to note is cybersecurity is a little bit of a doom and gloom subject, unfortunately. It's just the nature of what it is. My intention isn't to get up here and try to scaremonger anybody or anything. It is to inform everyone of the types of things that we're dealing with, and sometimes that does sound a little bit, a little bit scarier than we would like. The biggest reason I'm here is I'm sure most people are aware that a recent cybersecurity attack hit a little close to home, and the Seattle Public Library is dealing with what seems to be a significant attack right now. Considering that is why, is why I'm up here, because incidences like this can help inform our own security practices by observing and seeing what malicious actors are doing out there, especially at organizations that share similarities with us. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of information on the Seattle breach currently. What we do know is they suffered a ransomware attack. It forced all 27 locations offline at a time they had already been preparing to take systems down for maintenance. It was over the Memorial Day weekend. The attack took down public computers, public internet, Wi-Fi, printing, copying, faxing, book lockers, access to patron accounts, their ability to place holds and everything else. Essentially, in the end, they ended up pulling their own internet connection in order to prevent any more damage to the system, so everything went down. As of June 13, they were actually, they were excited to bring back audio and eBooks, and that is a great step in the right direction, but that still leaves a lot of their core systems offline. And considering how many patrons, especially lower-income or elderly patients that rely, patrons that rely on the services we provide, that is extremely detrimental to not just us, but also to our community. So something else I wanted to bring up, though, is that is just the most recent attack. That's the one everybody's heard about because it's right across the water from us, and we work with them, we interact with them. But in October 2023, both the Toronto Public Library and the British Public Library suffered large-scale cyber attacks as well. Digital transformation brought, has brought about an unprecedented level of convenience and efficiency, but it's also introduced a lot of new risks and vulnerability, and this is where cybersecurity comes into play. The reason it's like this is because the internet was really originally built to facilitate communications among trusted researchers and academics. It was primarily used by research institutions, government entities, universities. Security was an afterthought. So right now, a lot of our security is essentially just a layer on top of a bunch of insecure systems. And that's why, that's one of the reasons there's so many issues. Once you get around that, or one misconfiguration can leave you wide open, which I'll speak about here in a second. And the importance of security can't be overstated. A recent study by the Cybersecurity Ventures says cybercrime is predicted to, excuse me, predicted to cost the world $10.5 trillion annually next year. So it's not something that's going to happen. It's already happening. So as we continue embracing digital technologies to facilitate modern life, we need to consider robust security measures, and they become even more crucial. And it's not just the responsibility of IT professionals. It's really the responsibility of everybody using digital technology. We all have to work together. We can't do it without staff and patrons, and staff and patrons can't do it without us. Understanding the risks and implementing the appropriate security measures is something we can all do to contribute to a safer digital world. So a little more about the British Library attack. In October 2023, the ransomware event encrypted data and exfiltrated over 600 gigabytes of both employee and patron personal data. They included national insurance numbers, which are similar to our social security numbers. And the attackers demanded a 20 Bitcoin ransom for, for its release, which at the time was a half a million dollars, and it's closer to three quarters of a million now. In addition to that, they also destroyed servers in order to prevent any recovery and cover their tracks. And that was the most damaging thing to the library, because what they used to do, they would get in there, they would get into a system, they would put ransomware on there, they'd lock you out. Maybe you paid, maybe you didn't. Now, the current thing that they do, they get in there, they drop the malware on there, they let it sit for six to 12 months, and that way it gets incorporated in all your backups and everything else you have. So even if you restore that from a backup, assuming it wasn't destroyed in the initial attack, then as soon as it comes back online, it just gets relocked. Now you're back however many hours or days that you had to roll your backup back to, and you're still locked out. So the main issue identified was actually from a terminal server that was built to facilitate and expand access for staff and partners during COVID-19 pandemic. And if that sounds familiar, that's because all libraries, including KRL, face the same challenge. The sad part, though, is they built this server to replace an older server that they had already deemed insecure and not able to handle the task. But they still gained access. Investigations determined that it was caused by compromised credentials sent through a phishing and spearphishing campaign, and they had a lack of two-factor authentication on this. They were down for six months, and it cost them somewhere between $7.6 and $8.9 million in damage, plus the reputational damage that goes along with it, because one system out of all their systems didn't have two factor. Every other system had it. The Toronto Public Library, it's, it's kind of a lot of the same thing. We also don't have a lot about them, because even though they were attacked in October, they still haven't fully remediated their issue. So we don't, so they're not giving out a lot of information. What we do know is the attackers compromised, quote, "a vulnerability in an internet-facing server," end quote, and they exfiltrated encrypted data, they exfiltrated and encrypted data on a file server. There are over 2,000 employees, past and present, that had their data compromised, and that did include social insurance number, which is Canada's version of our social security numbers, and as well as employee and employee dependents. So one of the things that we hear, I hear a lot, is why would they target a library anyway? And it is a valid question. Libraries, like many institutions, are vulnerable because we rely heavily on digital infrastructure, but it's not just the technology. It's about the people, the people that are using it. And that's why it's critical for everybody to practice good cybersecurity practices. Also, it's a simple public service disruption. Government-related entities like public libraries, they provide important services to the community, and they can have a significant impact. And as a side of that, we have a tendency, not government entities, things like that, have a tendency to want to remediate immediately, which means we're more likely to pay, assuming you have the money. Honestly, public libraries, in many ways, they reflect an early ethos of the internet. They offer unimpeded and open access to information. This is a worthy and noble goal that we as staff, including myself, wholeheartedly embrace. But one area we need to shift our perspective a bit is on the security measures. In the past, IT has actually been directed not to cause any disruptions or disruption to services, no matter the duration. We were told any impediment to either staff or patrons was unacceptable. Simple critical system updates, specific access controls, and security measures that IT staff advocated for were denied frequently. And the reason being is, again, because they were viewed as barriers to access rather than as they should have been, which is essential safeguards. These protections are critical for all of our patrons and our staff, particularly the most vulnerable among us. By prioritizing security, we're not attempting to limit access. We're trying to ensure that our library remains a safe and reliable resource for everybody. Over the last couple of years, the library has actually taken a much better view of these policies, and we are moving in a very good direction. Yes, sometimes these updates or these patches cause some issues that we didn't intend, and we have to work them out, and that causes a little bit of downtime. Sometimes the updates will take certain systems down, including public facing, but we always try to schedule those for way outside of normal hours, middle of the night, late, late, late on a weekend, something like that. But the other thing to consider is KRL's already been the victim of multiple attacks. We've already faced a ransomware attack ourselves. We face phishing and spearphishing on a daily basis, and we even had a sophisticated attack not that long ago that took the time to clone our entire login page and then go on a phishing campaign for staff credentials in order to gain access. Thankfully for the ransomware, it was caught by IT before it was, before it was triggered, and that took a lot of dedication from them and honestly, a little bit of luck. And what I wonder about is how far would that have spread and how bad could it have been for us? And that was already years ago. As far as the sophisticated attack, several employees were actually successfully phished. They had their accounts compromised and their credentials stolen. And one was to an account that was being used across the entire library system due to a legacy policy. We were actually fortunate. We had a staff member that was willing to risk their potential embarrassment and come to us and say, "I think I gave away my credentials." So I really appreciate that, because as embarrassing as that could have been for them, that was what allowed us to mitigate it before any real damage was done. Okay. So having said that, it's not all bad. We, I know. I'm sorry. I know. It's, it's a bit doom and gloom. But overall, in the last couple of years, we have significantly increased our overall security. This kind of weaves a little bit of good, is our Microsoft Security Score was essentially zero when I started here five years ago. Right now, we are significantly higher. I don't want to go in exactly where we are on that in a public forum, but we are doing much better, and we are still trending in the right direction. We've implemented next-generation firewalls, network segmentation, which basically means all the different things are walled off from each other. So the public Wi-Fi is walled off from the public internet. The public internet is walled off from the staff internet and things like that. We've built better access, network access controls. We've built better server and file access controls. We've implemented advanced firewalls, antivirus and threat protection, and we've implemented several security policies covering things from email and file access to systems updates and email scanning. Having said that, we do have some areas for improvement. Our biggest, our biggest area of improvement is going to need to be education and a change interview on policy changes. Like I said, in the past, it's been seen as a disruption and a bad thing. But not only did that lead to our systems being somewhat insecure in the past, it's also left us behind the power curve. Some of the policies now that were implemented as you can use it are now becoming mandatory. And since in the past, we didn't necessarily take advantage of all those trials, and now they're being enforced on us, and now we're having to do that, and we have no say in the matter. And honestly, staff is getting bombarded by a lot of changes, but we don't have any control over it. So normally, those changes do happen gradually over the years, year by year by year. It's small incremental change, small incremental change, causes a little hiccup, causes a little bit of required retraining or relearning because it works a little bit differently. But it's not quite the same as catching up for several years. So that's, that's the big one. Regular training and awareness programs help employees understand the importance of security and recognize threats and follow best practice. We are currently in the works on this, and there is numerous articles out there that the biggest bang for your buck that you're going to get is in user education. User education is your frontline. They're the people that are getting these attacks. They're the people that need to recognize it, and they're the people that need to report things when they, when they happen. We do need to do a little more frequent audits, audits and assessments, and some additional security policies. Security audits help us identify vulnerabilities and areas for improvements, including things like penetration testing and vulnerability assessment. Again, we've already taken steps in this direction, so we're doing well. More frequent reviews of incident response plans is something that came directly out of the Seattle Library. We have an incident response, and we do know what it is, and our staff generally knows what it is. But Seattle shows us a bit of the unpredictable nature of these attacks, so I think we need to do that a little more and try to come at it from different angles, because it's not, the attacks are never as static as the response seems to be. The last big thing we need to do is, we need to do vendor risk management, because we should be better at assessing our vendors' security posture rather than just the service they provide us. We've already seen an uptick in malicious emails sent directly to our domain after one of our vendors that does have hooks in our system was compromised. Thankfully, there was no damage done to us, but the end result could be five years from now, somebody clicking on a link that was phished out of that attack on a vendor. So it's, even though it hasn't been us yet, it still could be. Essentially, we need to start asking different questions instead of just, what service can you provide us? But how secure your system can be? In conclusion, the journey towards robust cybersecurity is always ongoing. It's not really a destination like people would like to look at it. It's a continuous process of learning, adapting, and improving. We have made significant strides. There is still work to be done. As we move forward, I want, everyone should remember that this isn't just about protecting systems and data. It's about safeguarding our trust and the confidence that our patrons place in us. It's about ensuring the library system remains a reliable and secure resource for the community for years to come. And that's it. I want to thank everybody, everybody for their time and attention today, and your support is crucial as we navigate all of these complexities together. But working together, we can build a safer digital world. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you so much, Mike. Come on back up. You're not going anywhere.
Yeah. I want to sit down.
Yeah, we, we have, we have many reasons to thank you. Number one, thank you for your service. And number two, thank you for keeping us safe. This is very educational and appreciate you being up here. I'll open up the floor to anybody who has any questions.
I don't have a question, but your commentary really made me stop to think about, and for the general public as well, of all the complexity that lies underneath what we think our libraries are, right? And in our mind, we still often think about them as those physical spaces in books, and yet we know that a majority of the services are really provided through digital means, and so it's mind-boggling. But you made a comment, it struck me also as you were talking, that given your own role as a first responder, that the job here really is not unlike a community campaign that happened several years ago where we shifted the conversation so that you weren't the first responder, but people who knew, who did CPR and could respond in the community. And that's really the same job that you've got now in terms of having people like myself, who's just hates to learn all, all the stuff, but to really get on board and understand that we really are the frontline. So you got a big job, and thank you.
You're very welcome. It does seem to have a lot of similarities that I walk into, yes. And yeah, especially even you as board members, you are prime targets. I can promise you that each and every one of you has been attacked. We've seen it. We've remediated it. So it happens. Mike Rose has been attacked. Jeannie is attacked on a weekly basis, I think, and maybe more frequently. Jason's been impersonated. He's been attacked. We get emails regularly saying, "Hey, I'm Jason Driver. Please respond to my jjdriver@outlook.ru." So yeah, it is. It's, it's ongoing, and we do appreciate everybody's help. And that's, I think, our biggest challenge, is making sure everybody knows that this is us working together and not us dictating terms, because we can't do it without you. We cannot be the sole responsible party. It won't, it won't work. So thank you.
And my daughter works over at Seattle Public in reference, and so I've heard all about it. But they don't know that much, just what, like I think, as you said, they don't know what the, what's the damage is. They don't know if personal information has been lifted or not. She resurrected an antique typewriter so she can answer some questions. She's doing it by, just nail mail sometimes. And so they have the tele- She's doing it by just nail mail sometimes and so they have the telephone and they have people coming in person, but otherwise, there's no access to the library. It's really, it's been a month now, over a month now, so.
Yeah.
It could be months yet.
Yeah. The Toronto Public Library works on a budget about 15 times higher than ours. The British Public Library works on a budget about 10 times higher than us. It costs the British Library half of their yearly reserve to mitigate it and it, six months. And honestly, without people like your daughter that are out there just putting in the effort and putting in the work to get patrons on their way, at least in some capacity, we would literally have nothing to give them. And it's terrible. When I started here, honestly, when I saw the job applicant, or the job posting, I thought, "How much technology does a library have?" I honestly, part of the reason I applied is because I thought, "This should be interesting. What do they have? How big is their team?" And it's like, wow, it's a lot. It's a lot more than I think the average person thinks of when they come in to check out a book or even when they're checking out a book online. I don't think they think about that. We have a STEM department that does all kinds of things. Our public services department does it. Library is amazing and it's a great place to be and it's there for everybody. And honestly, I just want to protect it. I grew up here. I spent, I was a latchkey kid and I spent lots of hours in the library trying to learn and I want that for my kids, I want that for our community.
Hey Mike, I don't think I heard it in your presentation, but like, pick a month, like May, how many roughly inbound attacks did we monitor?
Yeah, actually.
Attempts, I should say.
I think I glossed over that. So in the month of May, we had 3,130 blocked intrusion attempts just between 5-1 and 531 and that doesn't include anything except people trying to get into systems directly on the KRL network. We've had over 50,000 attacks to users directly through the Microsoft system and cloud-based systems and that's what four of us deal with, which is also the big push of, "We need everybody's help." It's a lot.
I just want to say thank you and thanks for highlighting this on the agenda for us. It's easy for us to take our security for granted and, you know, not even have this kind of issue on our radar as we go about our lives and our responsibilities and so thank you for your presentation and reminding us about these critical issues and I know you're likely one of those underappreciated staff or departments because people do tend to perceive your work as an inconvenience at the least, you know, if not more. Yeah, so, but I just wanted to say thank you and this was an excellent reminder and helps us to appreciate you and the work that you do, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much. I did want to point out that we have Gianni and Nick and Mike, just want to make sure it's, I'm sure everybody knows it, but I don't want to be the only one and they are, they work very hard. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in and give really credit to both Mikes. You know, when we talk about embodying the mission and often you've seen us trot out public services staff because, you know, quite frankly, to the average layperson, that is the person or persons that they identify as being the faces of KRL. But, you know, equally important and no less important are people like Mike Carlisle and Mike Rose who, you know, Mike Carlisle has a curiosity of wanting to firm up network security and that's a passion of his, that's an area of expertise that he had not up until this point been able to really get into. And so part of, you know, embodying the mission is also, you know, our leaders recognizing the passions of staff that align with library initiatives. And so, you know, I give credit to Mike Rose for identifying that Mike Carlisle has a passion and communicating with him on a daily basis to really bring out that curiosity and saying, "Hey, this is an area you've, you know, had an opportunity, you have an opportunity now to really display your skills and help firm up our security and, you know, we need more Mike Carlyles in the world and more Mike Roses in the world and more Giannis and Nicks and, you know, the whole crew." And so I really wanted to give you credit for not only showing up today, but giving a really dynamic presentation. My ears perked up a little bit and there's some things that I thought I knew a lot about security, but, you know, you shared some things that I think have value for all of us, not only for work, but in our personal lives. So at least, you know, you achieved that in helping us be more security-minded, not only at work, but at home too. So I just want to thank you for coming out and sharing time with us, so I appreciate you.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it. And if that's a takeaway, then it went well.
All right, thanks again, Mike. We'll go to 7.02, Board Member Updates. Who would like to go first?
Are you going to go?
No.
Nope.
I don't have anything to report, so.
That's why I didn't want to go. That's been me in the last couple of months. I've been MIA honestly here the last few weeks, but it was really fun to kind of come back and be able to attend the appreciation event for the Friends of the Library. I don't think you could have picked a better day in terms of weather and location, so it was, it was really fun to just be there with the team and the volunteers and everybody. So thanks for that, you know, lots of.
I was so sorry to have missed that, especially because it was in my backyard, right? But I missed the last meeting and I would have reported there that I volunteered with Leanne for the Kingston and Little Boston branch at the Little Boston Strong Family Fair event and that was really fun, interacting with the patrons and the public and so I did a little civic duty, so thanks.
All right, I also unfortunately missed the Friends luncheon, but two updates from me. Bainbridge Island had a Juneteenth celebration last Wednesday and I was very glad to see Bert from the Bainbridge Library there giving out books and greeting the citizens and also had, got a couple of Juneteenth library cards, so pretty excited about that. And just on a personal note, my son just turned five and he got his library card, so really excited about that. And he gets a little nervous about reading aloud, so we've talked about bringing him to the library so he can read to a dog. That was a, pretty excited for that one, I hope to get some photos of that. Okay, so we'll go to 7.03, Long Range Strategic Planning Committee Report. Gina.
We just met with leadership staff and the conversation continues on whether we're going to engage on a levy lift. So that's about the extent of it, just still navigating those conversations and considering that, so thanks.
Thank you, Gina. We'll go to 7.04, Financial Report. Dan, do you have anything to add to the financial report?
Not really, all the financial indicators are looking great this month.
Sounds good. Anybody have any questions about the financial report? Okay, and we'll go to 7.05, Jason, for the Library Director's Report.
Yes, good evening again. And so, month of May, like every other month, is busy. So releasing the strategic plan, as you know, was a lot of work to get us to where we are now, but the real work I consider to be now because releasing the strategic plan gave us a long-term view of what we want to do as a library system. And so really, this work has been all about alignment this year and all about preparing us for some of the major outcomes that we want to see from our strategic vision. And I'm going to talk about one aspect of that tonight. And so, you know, part of our work has really been to engage all of our teams to really start the building blocks for what we want to see. So we not only have a fiduciary responsibility to maximize the tax dollars for our taxpayers to support library services here, but also operationally to maximize the resources and the people in order that we can best serve the public that, you know, use library services every single day. And so we're public servants, so we recognize fully that we have a duty to provide for our patrons and our staff long, long-term beyond our tenure here. So continuation from really our annual staff day, we really talked about accessibility and in continuation from that, really took our supervisors, managers and leadership through a more in-depth experience, learning about accessibility and universal design. And so we met at the Kingston branch, which sits inside the Village Green, last month in May and we learned all about accessibility and learned how to actually take universal design and the principles of universal design and really kind of for, as a way to, as a fun exercise, put the Village Green center in aspects of the library, physical building to the test in terms of measuring, leveling and figuring out if you have the proper width for handicap spaces, door width, that whole sort of thing. And so that was a really good exercise to start to prepare us for the things that we need to look out for in the future because obviously, part of our missions will be always to make sure our facilities are as welcoming as possible to all the folks who use them. And so accessibility at the forefront is important for us and not only that, it aligns very well to our, you know, our mission for an organization to, you know, serve the widest group possible. We can't be everything to everybody, but we can be as welcoming as we can to everyone. And so what that entails is really moving us towards our first strategy is fostering welcoming belonging. So thanks to all of the work from Lucretia and the teams that she's deployed to help her roll out our DEI priorities from 2022, we're really starting to look at that and figuring out where we need to be. And it's a long-term process. In order to get to where we want, it's going to take really this full year of training to be able to get the principles down of universal access, universal design and also language access is important too. And so just taking all those aspects, you know, we have, really have three goals in that. To increase availability and use of diverse and representative materials, resources and services, built for underrepresented communities with the chronifiable metrics tracking utilization, a marked reduction in identified barriers to access in not only policies, procedures, but the evidence that those changes have been influenced by feedback, not only from the community, from our staff, from our patrons and board as well. And then improve community perception of the library's inclusivity and responsiveness and feedback, showing a greater satisfaction and relevance. Obviously, at the end of the day, once we get to where we feel like our libraries are as accessible as possible through not only physical access, but reducing language barriers as well, we'll start to poll the community and see where we are. But a lot of the work we're doing in leadership again is to lay the foundation for work that's to come later. So you can't dive all in to all the things now and fix them. And I think there's a tendency when you do trainings like this for people to go look at everything that's wrong. We're going to measure every door, we're going to figure if every bathroom stall and, you know, every entrance and all the things are as accessible as they need to be. But, you know, as we know, lots of our facilities, and not only in library facilities, but in general, these facilities, especially anything older than, you know, 30 years even, is not, I would say even 20 years, is probably not up to code. Obviously, we've been able to retrofit some here and there, but a lot of the work long-term will inform to future facilities. If we are in a position to upgrade facilities or even, you know, replace facilities, we'll at least have those principles down and we'll memorialize those with documentation that other leadership and staff can use to sort of guide where we are as an organization. So we hope that these frameworks are solid ones that will exist for years to come. And that whole idea of creating welcoming spaces and designing, you know, not only our collections, but spaces for all populations, you know, that's important. And eventually, we'll look at modifying some of our existing spaces as we get some of those principles down to figure out what we need to do in some of our more, you know, aging buildings, you know, where we can be in terms of making ourselves the most welcoming library we can be. And so one of the other things I wanted to talk about in terms of welcoming spaces is some work we did this year. Really, it started last year and I'm going to let my colleagues, Wendy and Jeannie, and if Mike even wants to jump in too, that would be great, because this was a great example of not only team collaboration, but also an example of something that we had to retrofit into a building that was already built. And so part of it, what happened is there was a lot of generous support around the building of the Silverdale Library. And, you know, one of our biggest funders, who wanted to remain anonymous, so we'll not mention that person's name here, really wanted their gift to be stewarded in a way that it could memorialize one of her dearest friends who unfortunately passed away and wanted to sort of, you know, wanted to be recognized, not in name, but in her friend's name. And so part of the mission was figuring out how to do it, how to do it tastefully, how to communicate properly and how to keep that person's vision of what they wanted to see in the library and then how to communicate that and how to work with building partners, who's the Central Kids App School District, how to work with facilities, how to work with public services to pull that off. And so this space, which we're calling Alley Space, which is named after Ally Herzog, who is a children's author who is deceased, I think the space really came alive well with a lot of collaboration and a lot of guidance and it is a very welcoming space for children and families and I think it fits in neatly with what we have right now in the Silverdale Library. So I'm going to turn it over to Wendy first to get us started on how this came to be and to talk about how creating welcoming spaces happened in real time.
It was definitely a partnership, so I'll start off just really echoing Jason, this was the lead donor for the Silverdale Capital Campaign who did choose to use the naming rights for the gift made to honor a very dear friend, best friend. And the space was inspired, we brought the donor in, we of course opened the library in 2022 and getting this donor, getting kind of the donor into the space was a little bit of a challenge. The pandemic was going on and there was all kinds of things going on, right? So finally, we were able to bring the donor into the space after the library was opened and have conversations with our colleague, with all of our colleagues at the table to really understand the vision, knowing that the intention behind the gift was to honor the memory of Ally. And so our amazing colleague, Ayana Jones, really was able to hear what she was describing and really did bring it to life. And so I think what I would say before passing it off is we did have the opportunity to bring the donor in to see the space and it was a very, very special meeting and it really absolutely exceeded expectations. The space feels like it was always meant to be there. So the design was just spectacular and of course, it absolutely exceeded expectations. So kudos to our communications team and facilities who helped really get this vision, bring this vision to life. So I'll pass it off to Jeannie.
Thanks, Wendy. I think that the word I would use to describe this project is just serendipity. There's a lot of things that happened over the last several years that led to this project coming to life and one of those was just that initial difficulty of trying to understand how the donor wanted this gift communicated. And I think if we had had the opportunity to have early conversations, it would have ended up being just like any other project where it would have been the signage on the wall and the way that every other piece of signage kind of materialized. But because we, it took us some extra time, we really did have this opportunity to meet with the donor and kind of identify some areas of opportunity within the branch. So we already had a really special place, but we were really able to slow down and say, "Well, what more could we do in this space?" So if you haven't had the opportunity yet to visit the Silverdale branch, I really invite you to because what has materialized is more than just this recognition of an author, but a transformation of the space for the children. So there are now trees and one of the most magical pieces is that we really got to learn about the author's most significant piece, which was about a thesaurus. And so we took that concept and we weaved it into the space and there's hidden words and hidden animals and symbols throughout the entire. and hidden animals and symbols throughout the entire space that were generated by our community. And then we took that, and now there's this everlasting kind of game that's materialized out of the space. So people that are new in the space get these opportunities to kind of do a search throughout the entire space and find all of the words and talk about the meaning. And so there's just layer upon layer of meaning that speaks to what is special to the donor, but also just speaks to what is special about libraries. And our communications team, specifically Ayana Jones, our graphic designer, really worked hard to honor the donor's wishes and the special relationship that our donor had with the individual that we're representing. And in being able to do all that, we also were able to create something really special for the community, so. Anything else?
Thank you. And so that's how it all came together. It'd be neat to show you in more detail, but I would encourage you to stop by Silverdale and check out the display yourself. And thank you. That's the conclusion of my report. Any questions?
I have a comment, Jason, because I think what's so thrilling about that, you know, Jeannie, you used the term serendipity, and sometimes, because things take longer, different opportunities arise, or we arrive to a conversation differently. And I think the example about that that just thrills me is, the reason why had that happened earlier, it might have been that conventional. We put a donor sign on the wall, and that's what it looks like here. And I have to say, this is quite a moment. I mean, I feel personally very proud of all of you, because I think this dialogue of more than the frontline philanthropic person to be able to hear the donor, and the degree to which people were willing to listen, and others came to the table to try, is such a milestone, I think, on this pathway that's been so important to me as a member of the Board of Trustees about the importance of integrating philanthropy into the way, into the DNA of the organization. So kudos to all of you. That is just, I think, a real tribute. So appreciate it.
Thank you. It's very gratifying to just watch it all come together, and just from the, you know, inception and, you know, walking into that space. I remember very early on, me having meetings with the donor and, you know, not knowing fully how we're going to pull this off and, you know, because it is such a, you know, for me, and my experience, was not the conventional way to recognize a donor, but like, the ability to listen and to do things that you haven't had previously experienced doing, that's all about what we do as a library, is listening, understanding, and iterating based on the feedback we get, not only from donors, but patrons, anywhere on the chain, right? Everybody's important, and that's, you know, if we're doing our jobs right, that's what we do. We may not be able to act on everything, but listening is important, and listening for understanding is important. So I'm really proud of the work that this team did to make that happen. And it truly was a team effort by, you know, multiple departments to make it happen. And even, Mike didn't say anything about this one, but he was very involved, too, because from a facility standpoint, he had to, you know, approve and figure out which materials would be best for hanging and such. And so we were able to pull that off, and to communicate as well to our, to the building owners. So yes. And it is currently in the issue of chapters. If you want to read the story on how that came to be, there's a really nice story that was done by Communications. And then the last thing I'll say is, Ayana Jones is a person you all should know, and the entire team is great, but Ayana was the one that translated that vision into the, I'm going to make up a word, because I don't think it exists, the magicality that it is. And so it would be neat to have Ayana in this space, too, because she's done so many wonderful, you know, graphical elements for us, you know, from library cards to, you know, summer, to a little bit of everything. And the whole team is phenomenal, but it would be nice to have her and showcase her work and how she embodies the mission as well. So maybe that's a mission moment for July, perhaps. And that is the end of my report. Any other?
Yeah, thank you for sharing. Very, very touching. One thing that really resonates with me through all of this is, and not just, you know, it's the kind of the joy of giving, right? The joy of giving and kind of giving back to a donor who is giving their heart in this. And to be able to reciprocate that in a way that is meaningful to them and meaningful to the patrons, I think, is just something that just transcends, transcends what we do. So it's wonderful, wonderful to echo Stephanie's sentiment, wonderful what you've done. And so any further questions from the board? Okay. Thank you for your report, Jason. Appreciate it. And with that, we'll go to housekeeping. Our next board meeting is Tuesday, July 23rd, so we'll see you then. Until then, our meeting is adjourned.
Now that is how you end a meeting. That did. Some a little bit of aggression there. You want to talk?